Again. Thank you. And welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, August 22, 2022. This is your notice and reminder that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And also, I guess I'd be remiss in not welcoming everyone to the first meeting in our new building and our new conference room. So thanks to our construction team and project managers and all of those that we spoke about at the ribbon cutting last week, which was a great event in getting this building up and ready. So it's great and welcome to everyone. We're going to start tonight with a special presentation. It's an Eagle Scout presentation by Derek DeRosiers. So I will call him up to make his presentation to us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Derek DeRosiers. I'm a scout in troop 33 of North Attleboro. And I've been working for the past few months with Mrs. Scott, who's joining us. She is a very great teacher at Hill Robert Elementary School. Mr. Chellman, who is the principal of Hill Roberts Elementary School. And Mrs. Noble, who has spearheaded the outdoor classroom from the PTO standpoint. And so tonight, I'm going to help you a little bit about the projects I've done so far and what we're going to do in the future and what we're looking for approval wise. So you're probably first wondering, I promote Attleboro. How did I get involved in all of this? I can go to Attleboro, my few schools now. So first, we got this project idea on purpose of Scott, who applied for and received a grant from Rose for $5,000 for an outdoor classroom space. That was in 2019 though, so I imagine COVID happened and got thrown off all the plans. But I actually got involved in this. I was volunteering with the Attleboro Land Trust for a while. And I reached out to one of the members and asked if he had any ideas for an Eagle project. And this was actually one of the ideas he had. So in the first packet with all the pictures, on the first page, there's some pictures of a trail that I remixed recently. The first, the very first picture, the green highlighted portion is what I remixed. So basically with my troop, we went out and cleared all the trails, made it nice, walkable, a little bit wider. And then the second picture, we installed six posts throughout half of the trail. And eventually I'm going to make them a packet, which is the second she dug up. That was the original packet for the trail that a teacher made in the 90s. But I'm going to remake that with the six new posts and with what's there now. And I'll also put like some trail markers up. I'm going to be working with the art teacher at the elementary school. We're going to be doing some little kindness rocks and birdhouses and trying to along the trail just to make it a little bit nicer. But so actually, that's how the project started. So when I met with Mr. Chellman and Mr. Rich, they approached me and asked if I'd be willing to take on the outdoor classroom portion of the project, which I did not know about. But he just mentioned to me, oh, we have this money set aside for class and we're looking for someone to lead it. So I was just like, oh yeah, sure, might as well, goes along with this trail. So after doing this trail, I'm planning on integrating it into the classroom by making, obviously making the new packet for teachers to use, but also making some lesson plans. And I'm also going to be hanging some signs on some of the trees that they can take their children out, like on the trail and have them bring it over and have it ask like, in this location, what do you see, what do you hear? Like for those smaller kids, because that's the part of the trail that's shorter. But so for the outdoor classroom, on the second page, I believe, of the pictures, there's a picture of the one side of the school that's going to be the outdoor classroom and an aerial view that I took from Google Maps with key and different color codes for what's there. So we're thinking of building, we're going to be working with the high school to build a shed to put in the corner by the playground. It's going to hold a bunch of supplies for all the teachers so they don't have to bring everything out with them and bring it all back in when they come out or back inside. And then we're also going to be building some garden boxes around the perimeter to first define the space, but also just to have a spot for the kids to use to plant flowers and have that go into the curriculum as well. And of course, you need somewhere to sit. We're thinking of doing some benches, which I have some designs on the third page, along with a picture of some garden beds we're thinking of building. But we also might do some picnic tables if we want to leave more in the way of having a table as well, so they can write on it or do little experiments. But basically, at this point, we are looking for approval to continue with this project for the outdoor classroom part, so we can start putting in the benches, the beds, and build the shed. Because right now, the trail is mostly done. That should hopefully be done by the time school starts. But now we are starting to shift gears and go towards the outdoor classroom and start building that, getting it ready for use for the teachers.
Great. Well, thank you.
This is incredibly impressive. Very, very well done in what you've done so far and what you're proposing to do. Before I open it up to questions, I guess I would ask the administration if they had any opposition or objections to the proposed plan before we...
I forgot to take my stupid pills. I am 100% on board. The administration is very appreciative of your contribution here, and this is a fantastic plan. And I would also suggest that Mr. Chellman gets to give his two cents as the leader of Hill Roberts.
Mr. Chellman?
Check.
Well done. Any comments or questions from the committee? Yes, Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scout master over here, so you know, I love seeing scouts working in the schools, working with the schools. So this is an amazing thing. So my first question is, the trail remarking that you did, was that your original Eagle project? Was that just like a side project?
That was my original Eagle project. That's what the person from Attleboro Land Trust told me, basically. But I hadn't started that before I knew about the classroom, so it's kind of both of them. But just because of timing wise and waiting for this approval, I started the trail first, and that's just what's happened so far.
Sure. Did you revise your project, or is the trail still your original project and you're just taking on more?
It's still all part of the same project. Like even when I did my proposal, I still had like the two parts of the project, but it's just originated as this trail and then I kind of added on the classroom, but it's still all part of the one big project.
It's amazing. So what's your timeline, if I could ask?
So basically, I'm hoping, we're going to hopefully meet sometime this week, early next week, to iron out some final plans of the classroom. I was actually thinking of having a service day this weekend. That's a little close, so I'm going to cancel that. Next time, I think the next service I'm going to have is sometime in mid-September to build either the garden boxes or the benches. We're going to be working with the high school carpentry department to build a shed. That should hopefully be done sometime in September or probably early October. For the garden beds, if we wanted to, depending on when we think it would get the most use, we might wait. Or we could build a framework for those, but just not fill them with dirt until the spring, because you know, the flowers would die if they planted them in like October. Or we could just wait to build those until the spring. But the benches are definitely going to be done first in mid-September, so the teachers will be able to use that basically right away. The shed, again, will hopefully go with that in September. So basically, we just won't have the garden boxes right away for use, but everything else will be done in September or early October.
That's amazing. One last one, if I could. So to kind of get away from the project, as far as you go in for Eagle Scout, how many merit benches you have left?
One, sit in the society.
Which one?
Sit in the society.
Yep, that's the newer one, the more difficult one. Yep, so I understand. Great job. How old?
I'm 15. I'm turning 16 in two weeks.
Yeah. So you've got time. You're in a really good place. Congratulations. This is amazing.
Mr. Domenici?
Well, actually, Mr. Storrs, with his extra questions, I was curious about the timeline. So and I guess my only other add in on that is, you know, you said you would have a service day. So I guess we will announce that in case, you know, folks want to step up and pitch in. That was pretty much it. That's all I had. And just like, I can echo your sentiments. I love when the Eagle Scouts come in and, you know, help our schools out. We had a project a couple of years ago at Thatcher that went really well, so I'm excited to see it. We just need three more now, right, for the rest of the elementary schools? So, thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I'd just like to congratulate you on being at this point, at this point in your life. That's amazing to be ready to go to Eagle at 16 years old. Congratulations.
All right. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposal made by Derek DeRosiers for the project at Hill Roberts Elementary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations again and thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our business agenda tonight, and for that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for his report. Mrs. Sawyer?
Thank you, Chairman. As you've already commented on, this is an exciting moment for the entire district, certainly the high school, but the district as a whole. For those who have had the fortune of touring the building, it is truly a stunning structure. It is impressive in every way, and it is a state-of-the-art facility with little comparison. Our CTE spaces are the envy of the Commonwealth. I had the good fortune of being in Natick last week, and it was at a function about early college, and some state officials were talking to me about just how impressive our building is and how there, you know, it is far surpasses what most schools can offer and is among the best in the Commonwealth in terms of our ability to deliver the high-quality education we know our kids deserve. So, you know, I can't say enough to all the people who have contributed to bring us to this point. Obviously, it starts with the community's support for this project and through the leadership of several people to get us to this point, plus all the, you know, construction workers and the design team and everybody else that's helped to make this a reality. You know, truly, we have a community treasure here, something that I think everyone in Attleboro will be able to enjoy in one way or another in the years to come. That said, we need to temper all that excitement with a little bit of realism that this kind of a move, an endeavor of this complexity, is not without its issues. We have been dealing with our challenges all summer long, lots of things that, you know, despite our best planning, have, you know, cropped up and posed some serious challenges. I mean, we went without the internet for two weeks, and it turns out in 2022, it's hard to run a $90 million organization without the internet. And it affected, you know, the district as a whole, because, you know, we weren't just moving the high school, we were moving central offices. All the technological infrastructure of the entire district, all the servers that everything connects back to, all had to be moved over. And they're all being upgraded. I mean, it's all fantastic news, but there's quite a bit of work that goes into a move of that nature. And I'm sure people who are paying attention to the news would know that this is during a time in which there are all kinds of supply chain issues. There's all kinds of delays in deliveries, and we've had some real problems like other school districts had. But again, the fantastic team that's doing this work have stayed ahead of these things. And unlike some other communities, you know, we're able to open this building up and we're finding ways to work through the various things that have come up. And we're in good shape, but, you know, it's not going to be fully operational. We're not going to really be able to maximize the full potential of this place for months to come. We're still, you know, figuring out how to turn things on and working out some of the kinks, because, you know, some things you turn them on and they don't work, and you're going to figure out why. And all that takes time. And I just wanted to say to the community that for those who have already been taxed by some of the issues that we've had, I appreciate the patience that we've received. I think most people understand what we're up against. You know, most notably, you know, we would have published bus routes well before now under normal set of circumstances. But again, the technological difficulties we've had have delayed that. The bus routes were published this afternoon. For anyone at home wondering when that information's coming out, it is finally out. So we're making progress and we're knocking down our issues one at a time. But yeah, there are some problems. I think that's to be expected. Nothing's happened that's been cause for pause. All the rumors about our inability to start on time were just that. We are ready to go on Monday and looking forward to it. Just to review the timeline of what's happened since we last met, central office moved on July 12th. Administrators reported to work August 8th. We had several meetings with them over two weeks, the last two weeks. Building clerks reported August 9th. High school staff had access to the building starting August 15th, last Monday. We held new educator orientation in this building today. It was our first event with teachers, so that was pretty exciting. And the first day for educators to statewide will be Thursday, and we're holding that here in this building, giving them a tour of the facility and having our first meeting then. So, you know, all those benchmarks have been met and we continue to be on pace. For families at home, just a reminder that we are opening on Monday, August 29th, that's grades 1 through 12 plus. Then we have No School on Friday, the 2nd, and Monday, the 5th. I know that some people question why the calendar works out that way, and I just remind everybody that this was Attleboro's grand bargain between the start before or after Labor Day argument that I know in some communities still rages. So the four-day Labor Day weekend is our compromise here that works enough for us and has been a good move for us. Kindergarten starts Wednesday, September 7th, and the ELC opens on Thursday, the 8th. So those are the key dates, and I believe all the buildings at this point have sent out some communication, but, you know, there's lots of information coming. And that leads me to my next point. As you know, last year was one of my goals to work on district communication, and as part of that effort, we did our research and decided to switch platforms. So we have a completely new platform that has been implemented in the district. It's called AFTEGI. That part's not so important. What's important to understand is that it's an integrated system. It does our website, it does all of our social media, and it does our communication abilities directly with both families and students. It does, so that's what Remind was supposed to do, but never really quite worked the way that we thought it should. So this new platform does all of these things. Now, we're not quite ready to make use of all of it. Quite ready, we have quite a bit of training left to do. Teachers have to be told how to use these functions, but the website is in place. We are in the process of completely revamping the website. Because of the new platform, we can reorganize our information in a way that we think is going to be easier for families to access information. Unfortunately, when they switch over from one to the other, they just basically dump the old bad website into the new website. So that's where we started, and we've all summer been whittling away at pieces of it. In the coming months, we'll have it all sorted out and looking the way we want it to. But it's important that people check out the new website, see that it's quite different. The feed is the most important feature on the website. We're going to see lots of information coming that way. And then eventually, we'll be able to communicate directly with families and students through the app, which I really recommend that families download the app, right? Whether you're an Android or an iPhone, if you search for Attleboro Public Schools in whatever your app store is, you will find the app, download that, and the app is the centerpiece of this tool that we bought, right? The website, the social media, the communication, these are all tools that are great, but they're all designed to be used through the app. And I think that families will be very happy with the outcome when we get this all up and running in the months to come. But I just wanted to plug that for people who haven't done that yet, please do so. And again, if you go to the website, it's on what they call the gallery of scrolling pictures on the website. There's information on how to download them. So the last thing I was going to tell you tonight, September 12th, which is our next meeting, you should expect our normal set of updates from all the central office administrators in terms of how the opening went and give you some data about specific areas of interest. But also, we plan to bring in the new high school administration. If you remember, when we brought in all those other administrators that one night, we said there's only a limit to how many we could do in a night, so we decided to just do the high school as a separate thing, because not only do we have new people in new positions, but we also have a reorganization that we want them to explain to the community. So they'll be coming in on the 12th as well. So that's what you can expect from us the next time we're together.
Great. Just a quick, any questions here, Mr. Storrs?
I just noticed that on the website, the school committee agenda and calendar is not working right now.
Correct.
Oh. How about an update?
Yeah, so as I said, we're processing through, making everything work, because like, for instance, is the calendars that feed into the website, it's all automated now in a way that, you know, just requires some work on our end to get it all the way we need it to. And there's just so much we can do, because one of the things I would point out back to like, you know, a lot going on this summer, you know, every year, right, it's a lot to close down the year, give everyone a chance to take a little bit of time off, and then come back and get everything ready again for another school year. To do all that, like we do every year, and deal with moving the district from one building to the other, it's been a little bit like, you know, changing the tire on the bus while it's driving down the road. And so our capacity has been maxed out on a lot of things. So the website is a thing that we're just continuing to whittle away at as we go.
Mr. Frappier?
So I actually spoke to Kim Jensen today. She has the due dates on the calendar. She said it should be done by Thursday for the school committee, because a few people reached out saying that they didn't know when we're meeting. I just have one other question. For the new platform, AFTEGI, you said it's going to manage social media. Is that going to manage down to the individual school pages? Because we get different alerts from different schools.
Yeah, so in the app, you pick which schools you want information from. And one thing that we can now do that we couldn't do before is we can, as a district, push district messages down to all the schools, so all the schools get the exact same message when it is the same message for all of them. As you know, before, we would send out a message and then have each school share it or copy it, and, you know, we could do a whole bunch of things now that we couldn't do before, and that, we think, is going to streamline and make our communication more efficient.
Is that one of those things we expect a few months before that's fully up and running for the pushdown?
I would say weeks.
Please. Thank you.
Mr. Guinness?
Two quick questions. One is not district-wide, but Rathbun Willard Drive on the Studley side has obviously undergone a lot of change, for the matter. Can, do you mind just quickly reminding everyone, because even the high school traffic flow with buses is going to be a little different, what this part of the district is going to look like traffic-wise?
On which day? Because it's quite a fluid situation that we're dealing with here. Ms. Campbell will be communicating directly to certainly the high school community as to what they should expect, because we are in the midst of planning for the 29th, which is one reality. And, you know, quite frankly, we're right up against it to get everything we need to get done for the 29th, and we don't want to send out a message and have to undo that message. So I know people want information, but we're trying to make sure that things are going to be the way they're supposed to be before we say what people can expect, because I think the worst thing we could do is promise something and then not deliver on it. But what we are expecting is that the bus loop will be open on the 29th. It'll be a significant problem for us if it's not, so crossing our fingers. So that'll be a big change for us, because all the buses will be coming in through Bushy Street. The Bushy Street lot is where most students will be parking. There will be a little bit of, there's also student parking on what's the tennis courts. And that's a temporary condition until we get to about December. We're hoping that by December, enough of the other work will be done that we can open up the lot that's directly behind the building and next to the bus loop, what we call Lot C. When that one's open, then we can have students parking there. Unfortunately, we don't have enough staff parking, because the lot on the side of the building...
Closest to Brennan?
No, closest to the old high school isn't complete. So if you noticed tonight, the lot to, you know, in that direction, in the easterly side of the building, right, there's a portion of it that's being opened up actually tomorrow. We call that Lot B, but it's incomplete, because it wraps around the building into where the Bray Auditorium used to be, right? So that part of the lot isn't done yet. So as a result of that not being done, there isn't enough staff parking. So staff have to park in what we call Lot C, which eventually would be a student lot. But until everything's done, we need it for staff. So there's one parking plan, basically, for what we're going to do on day one, and, you know, we're pretty confident it should all work, because we technically have more parking spaces on August 29th than we did on June 15th. So it should all fit, but it's not where it's going to be in the long run, because by December 1st, we hope that everything will be done, and Lot B will actually be an L rather than just in front of the building. Staff can move to there, that'll open up C. C actually expands. That'll be a pretty significantly sized lot that's dedicated just to students. And then we can get rid of the tennis court lot, which is an overflow lot that we have right now, to help us to get from here to there that won't be part of the original plan. So that's the high school. The one over on the corner, closest to Brennan, right, that's a staff lot, and that'll be in full use come the first day, and that pretty much will be unaffected by the switch over by December 1st. And then as far as back to Rathbun Willard, so we are reconnecting Rathbun Willard. The Rotary, to my understanding, is not being opened until we're done with the construction project. So it's going to continue to look the way it does now. There will be Rotary, but that's not going to happen. But the connector is being opened up. They've already squared...
What's important to understand is that it's an integrated system. It does our website, it does all of our social media, and it does our communication abilities directly with both families and students. So that's what Remind was supposed to do, but never really quite worked the way that we thought it should. So this new platform does all of these things. Now, we're not quite ready to make use of all of it. Quite right, we have quite a bit of training left to do. Teachers have to be told how to use these functions. But the website is in place. We are in the process of completely revamping the website. Because of the new platform, we can reorganize our information the way that we think is going to be easier for families to access information. Unfortunately, when they switch over from one to the other, they just basically dump the old, bad website into the new website. So that's where we started, and we've all summer been whittling away at pieces of it. In the coming months, we'll have it all sorted out and looking the way we want it to. But it's important that people check out the new website, see that it's quite different. The feed is the most important feature on the website. We're going to see lots of information coming that way. And then eventually, we'll be able to communicate directly with families and students through the app, which I really recommend that families download the app, right? Whether you're an Android or an iPhone, if you search for Attleboro Public Schools in whatever your app store is, you will find the app, download that. And the app is the centerpiece of this tool that we bought, right? The website, the social media, the communication, these are all tools that are great, but they're all designed to be used through the app. And I think that families will be very happy with the outcome when we get this all up and running in the months to come. But I just wanted to plug that for people who haven't done that yet, please do so. And again, if you go to the website, it's on what they call the gallery of scrolling pictures on the website. There's information on how to download them. So the last thing I was going to tell you tonight, September 12th, which is our next meeting, you should expect our normal set of updates from all the central office administrators in terms of how the opening went and give you some data about specific areas of interest. But also, we plan to bring in the new high school administration. If you remember, when we brought in all those other administrators that one night, we said, there's only a limit to how many we could do in a night. So we decided to just do the high school as a separate thing, because not only do we have new people in new positions, but we also have a reorganization that we want them to explain to the community. So they'll be coming in on the 12th as well. So that's what you can expect from us the next time we're together.
Great. Just any questions here, Mr. Storrs?
I just noticed that on the website, the school committee agenda and calendar is not working right now.
Correct.
Oh. No, all right. How about an update?
Yeah, so as I said, we're processing through making everything work. Because like, for instance, is the calendars that feed into the website, it's all automated now in a way that, you know, just requires some work on our end to get it all the way we need it to. And there's just so much we can do. Because one of the things I would point out back to, like, you know, a lot going on this summer, you know, every year, right, it's a lot to close down the year, give everyone a chance to take a little bit of time off, and then come back and get everything ready again for another school year. To do all that, like we do every year, and deal with moving the district from one building to the other, it's been a little bit like, you know, changing the tire on the bus while it's driving down the road. And so our capacity has been maxed out on a lot of things. So the website is a thing that we're just continuing to whittle away at as we go.
For Mr. Frappier.
So I actually spoke to Kim Jensen today. She has the due dates on the calendar. She said it should be done by Thursday for the school committee, because a few people reached out saying that no one were meeting. I just have one other question. For the new platform, Aftogee, you said it's going to manage social media. Is that going to manage down to the individual school pages? Because we get different alerts from different schools.
Yeah, so in the app, you pick which schools you want information from. And one thing that we can now do that we couldn't do before is we can, as a district, push district messages down to all the schools so all the schools get the exact same message when it is the same message for all of them. As you know, before, we would send out a message and then have each school share it or copy it. And, you know, we could do a whole bunch of things now that we couldn't do before. And that, we think, is going to streamline and make our communication more efficient.
Is that one of those things we expect a few months before that's fully up and running for the push down?
I would say weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Guiness.
Two quick questions. One is not district-wide, but Rathbun Willard Drive on the Studley side has obviously undergone a lot of change, for the matter. Can, do you mind just quickly reminding everyone? Because even the high school traffic flow with buses is going to be a little different. What this part of the district is going to look like traffic-wise?
On which day? Because it's quite a fluid situation that we're dealing with here. Ms. Campbell will be communicating directly to certainly the high school community as to what they should expect, because we are in the midst of planning for the 29th, which is one reality. And, you know, quite frankly, we are right up against it to get everything we need to get done for the 29th. And we don't want to send out a message and have to undo that message. So I know people want information, but we're trying to make sure that things are going to be the way they're supposed to be before we say what people can expect. Because I think the worst thing we could do is promise something and then not deliver on it. But what we are expecting is that the bus loop will be open on the 29th. It'll be a significant problem for us if it's not, so crossing our fingers. So that'll be a big change for us, because all the buses will be coming in through Bushy Street. The Bushy Street lot is where most students will be parking. There will be a little bit of, there's also student parking on what's the tennis courts. And that's a temporary condition until we get to about December. We're hoping that by December, enough of the other work will be done that we can open up the lot that's directly behind the building and next to the bus loop, what we call Lot C. When that one's open, then we can have students parking there. Unfortunately, we don't have enough staff parking, because the lot on the side of the building...
Closest to Brennan?
No, closest to the old high school isn't complete. So if you noticed tonight, the lot to, you know, in that direction, in the easterly side of the building, right? There's a portion of it that's being opened up actually tomorrow. We call that Lot B, but it's incomplete, because it wraps around the building into where the Bray Auditorium used to be, right? So that part of the lot isn't done yet. So as a result of that not being done, there isn't enough staff parking. So staff have to park in what we call Lot C, which eventually would be a student lot. But until everything's done, we need it for staff. So there's one parking plan, basically, for what we're going to do on day one. And, you know, we're pretty confident it should all work, because we technically have more parking spaces on August 29th than we did on June 15th. So it should all fit, but it's not where it's going to be in the long run. Because by December 1st, we hope that everything will be done, and Lot B will actually be an L rather than just in front of the building. Staff can move to there, that'll open up C. C actually expands. That'll be a pretty significantly sized lot that's dedicated just to students. And then we can get rid of the tennis court lot, which is an overflow lot that we have right now to help us to get from here to there that won't be part of the original plan. So that's the high school. The one over on the corner, closest to Brennan, right, that's a staff lot. And that'll be in full use come the first day. And that pretty much will be unaffected by the switch over by December 1st. And then as far as back to Rathbun Willard, so we are reconnecting Rathbun Willard. The Rotary, to my understanding, is not being opened until we're done with the construction project. So it's going to continue to look the way it does now. There will be a Rotary, but that's not going to happen. But the connector is being opened up. They've already squared off, you know, the road where Brennan came out. So, you know, it used to curve as part of the road. Now that's been squared off so that, you know, the Brennan driveway basically ends at Rathbun Willard in a T-intersection. And that Rathbun Willard will now be opened up. I'm not exactly sure when the city will open up that traffic to, through traffic. I don't have that date, but that is coming. But in terms of Brennan and Studley families, those schools will be communicating. But, you know, our plan is to basically exist as we have before.
Awesome. And then the other question I had, which was more district-wide. It has been a while since we met. And at the end of last year, we knew that there were not going to be any testing protocols for COVID or anything like that beyond the end of last year. Have you heard anything about any other COVID-related protocols from the state? Or is it where we moved on?
So as I indicated in my message to families last week, basically, the state has instructed us to move on from COVID. The only restriction that we have to follow is that we have to have masks in health offices. That's still a requirement like it is at the doctor's office. So that hasn't changed. But other than that, no more testing. We're not going to do any kind of testing. We're not doing symptomatic testing of students who are in schools. Like, we would have to get another Clio waiver for that, and we are not applying for that. So we are not allowed to test students for COVID, and that's by design. We're asking that when staff and students are symptomatic, that they stay home. And if you test positive, you know, the guidance right now is to quarantine for five days. Isolate for five days, I guess is the better term. And then wear a mask for five days. And that's all we're doing. We're only going to work with families on positive cases. Everything else, we're just treating like any other illness.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Duvain, it's you.
Hi, so thank you. So we had a lot of conversations, obviously, about this building, which is huge. And, you know, to some degree, the connections to, yeah, I heard the 25th. But, you know, I know it's close to connected, and we'll see. My question is, we had a lot of other work going on in the other buildings. So my general question is, are there any challenges or issues to the other eight buildings as we get ready to open that folks should be aware of?
So the short answer is no, not that anyone needs to be worried about. I'm hoping that my lack of awareness of a thing that I should be mentioning right now reflects that there isn't one, and not that it just got lost in the shuffle with the obvious bigger problem that we're dealing with.
But... We had a lot of work being done to improve HVAC across all the buildings.
Parking lot work, a lot of work with HVAC in the buildings. Yeah, no, there's boiler work. There's a tremendous amount of work going on district-wide. Some pretty exciting stuff. You know, the environmental systems in our buildings are all being upgraded. So, yeah, quite a bit of work has gone on this summer. But to my knowledge, we're on track to not have any of it be a concern for opening school. Thank you.
Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with all of the discussion regarding parking and the coordination, how will that affect the marketplace? And also, what is the timeline for when the marketplace will be open to the community?
I don't have a date for that, but certainly we'll make sure that when the high school comes on the 12th, that it is ready to answer that question. You know, when we gave a tour last week, you know, it's pretty clear to me that those spaces are going to need a little bit of attention with staff in the building, with kids, to get them to be a place where they can be, you know, serving the public. So I'm pretty sure it's not going to be from day one. We need to focus on the fact that this is an educational environment first, and we want to make sure that the kids are safe and understand the equipment. And as soon as we're confident that we can get back to, you know, doing the things we do that the community want to come for, we'll be opening it up. And I hope that'll be in a matter of weeks and not longer than that. But certainly not going to be ready out of the gate.
Right.
Mr. Guiness.
And I will just say, because I think you're right to temper expectations of the condition of the building next week. But that being said, what was on the news following the ribbon cutting is very different from what the building looks like now. Because after the ribbon cutting, there was, the cafeteria was still being used for storage in advance of stuff being moved. Now it actually looks like a cafeteria. Some, the main stairway from the cafeteria, I think they had just started finishing it last week, and it's nearly complete. So a lot is still getting done. I think at School Building Committee, last week, they mentioned there were 600 punch list items that still needed to be complete, but they were completing 50 or 60 a day.
Yeah, I mean, it's, as somebody who, you know, has been here every day for a couple of weeks now, it is amazing how much changes in a day. And there's still an army of people in here getting us ready. You know, there was a real tension about when we would make the building available to people to start to see it. And there's always been an argument that we should have waited as long as we could. But there was obviously a lot of clamoring for a chance to see what things were. So we, you know, trying to find that balance like we always do. We did some events, you know, a little bit earlier than I think was maybe the most prudent. And as a result, yeah, people saw us still at work getting ready. And as, you know, if we went out into the building, we'd find evidence of that tonight. But quite a bit less than a week ago, and we'll be in a much better place come Monday.
Okay.
That concludes my floor.
All right.
In our business agenda tonight, we have three motions that were included with your packet. First is a motion to send to municipal council for approval of payment of prior year-end obligations in the amount of $4,781.53 as broken down in the August 17 memorandum.
So moved. Second?
Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we had a motion to approve the one-year renewal of the contract awarded to North Turf Inc. for maintenance of the grounds and athletic fields for the Attleboro Public Schools. Contract will run from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second?
Any questions on this extension?
I just have one question. Has that changed at all, being that we have a new school with some more official turfs and things of that nature? Has the contract been altered in any way?
Mr. Larson?
To the best of my knowledge, it has not.
That's the best of my knowledge.
When the contract was out to bid, all of this was in the works. Everybody bidding understood that.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the third one. Motion that the school committee declare pursuant to MasterCard Law Chapter 40, Section 15A, that the following parcels of land and all buildings located on such land are no longer needed by the school committee for school purposes and may be transferred to the care, custody, management, and control of another board or officer of the city for municipal purposes. That the school committee so notify the Admiral City Council. And the property at issue is the property located at 1125 South Main Street, otherwise known as the Finnberg School. And to also have the mayor send communication to the city council to take ownership of the property as soon as possible.
So moved. Second?
All right, and this is similar to what we did with the old high school, or some of us refer to it the old Brennan County Street in the past. Any questions? You have Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when we've had this discussion in the past about Finnberg, we were having the discussion about the other two buildings that we've already gone through this process with. To me, having Finnberg as like a backup building kind of thing, you know, like a what-if some emergency ever happened in one of our buildings, we had a place to kind of flow into. I guess my question would be, what would be the plan if there was an emergency of that nature, which prevented the use of part or a full building? How would we deal with that? I mean, I'm sure it's reach out to the, you know, City Hall and ask them, but...
The short answer is something other than Finnberg. I mean, Finnberg was included in the debt exclusion, so there really isn't a choice here.
So that's the case.
Yeah, when we had, part of the plan was to turn Finnberg over to the city, and the city will, we'd sell it, right, use part of the portions for...
Yeah, it was legally binding at that time. So it's, the opportunity to think of it differently has passed.
Mr. Guiness?
And so, I guess, where is Abacus going? And what is the, because they just wrapped up last week, or I guess a week and a half ago now. What's the timeline for getting them out of?
They're out.
That was quick.
The Big Square School.
Okay.
And that has to be sold too, but that situation's a little bit less pressing. So we bought ourselves a year to try to figure out the best landing place for Abacus.
And if I remember correctly, there was a storage unit on that property that had a good amount of district furniture. Is that also being, is that included in the surplus? Or has that been brought to other parts of the district where it's needed?
Everything that we deemed worthy of keeping has been removed from the property.
And is there, I guess, a long-term plan for where Abacus will go?
There is a long-term plan to find a place for Abacus.
Okay.
Mr. Frappier?
Just a question, because this was before I joined. There's no facade limitations or anything else that we have to agree to before we hand this to the city? It's just they can do what they want with the building once they have it?
Yeah, I mean, they can, I suppose, elect to put a facade restriction on it once they own it and have trouble selling it if they want to, but that's their prerogative.
Cool. Thank you.
That was the case with the...
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, that's why I was curious. I wanted to make sure.
Just to clarify your point, they've owned the building right along. We don't own any property.
That's right, but we're relinquishing it due to the judications. I'm using the wrong words, but we're saying, we're done, you do what you want.
It appears the language covers everything, including parking lots and such. We had a challenge with County Street previously that we didn't do our motion right. So I'm assuming...
County Street was a little, County Street was a little bit unique in the...
Because it had another property.
It had a different property that had parking on it. And this language is reflective of what the ultimate language was with County Street. And this is all, the park is on the same lot there, so we won't have the same issue.
Good. Just want to vote and be done.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, Assistant Superintendent Regan is going to talk to us about start times.
Thank you, Chairman Mother. So this concept originally was part of the previous strategic plan envisioning 2020. The Operations and Infrastructure Council integrated their research as part of the grade span reconfiguration at that time. And then during the pandemic, a little bit of that research stopped. However, over the past two years, we've had several middle school students who have reached out to you and other constituents in the city asking them about possibly changing start times due to the significant, or due to the health needs that arise from starting school earlier than later in the morning. The other request that we're responding to is, last spring, you were asked us to actually do more of a significant research on this and to present our findings to you now, so that's what this is. And in terms of next steps and what we're asking for tonight, what we would like to ask you is if we would like, if you would like for the Operations and Infrastructure Council to release surveys, hold some community forums, have some focus groups where we can continue with this research, because we do know that this is something that the community is passionate about once we start having those conversations. So this is just an introductory to the information that we have so far. So why would we do this? The research has shown that the biological sleep rhythms of adolescents shifts about two hours. And they receive their optimal sleep from about 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And with that, the amount of time that most adolescents should get is for, on average, about nine hours of sleep. And our current start time at 7:15 AM for high school students, if we were to discuss a scenario, that would require a typical high school student to wake up at about 6:00 AM, to possibly get on the bus at about 6:30 AM, and then arrive for school at about 7:05, 7:10 for our first period to start at 7:15. So knowing that their optimal sleep time is between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM, that would be a decrease in about two hours of sleep every single night. We also recognize that extracurricular activities and employment are also other activities that our students engage in that keep them up later in the evening. One other thing I did want to mention is that the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and the Centers for Disease Control have also recommended and endorsed schools starting later to increase the amount of time for students to get the adequate amount of sleep that they recommend. So everything on this list is ultimately what we want for our students, right? There's nothing on here that anyone would say that they disagree with. But we all want our students to have, you know, improved reaction time, increased attention and engagement, better attendance, and, you know, less tardiness coming into school, particularly in high school, and better performance in school. So let me preface by saying that these two slides that have options on them are more concepts, really thinking about the actual idea of flipping or condensing runs versus actual specific start times. So just think of more of the general terms. So this slide is specifically targeted middle school and high schools starting at the same time. What we found is that most districts in the area who have done their research and have adjusted start times have their middle school and their high school start at the exact same time. If this was something, if this was an option that we wanted to do and having the high school start at 7:45, it would increase their sleep time by about 30 minutes, moving from 7:15 to 7:45. And the research that we found is that at least 30 minutes of additional sleep time is also a benefit. This next option is flipping the middle school and high school runs. So the middle school would start at 7:15, and the high school would start at 7:50, which is the middle school time. Again, we would almost fall into the same predicament here with our middle school students receiving less sleep time and our high school students receiving more. In both options, there are implications that we discussed at length, including increased transportation costs to have both levels start at the same time. There was also concern about adequate time for athletics after school as well as after-school activities, including employment. The other option that we did discuss, but there wasn't a lot of traction for it, is to flip the high school and the elementary start time. And with that, there was concern about afternoon childcare for our youngest students, making sure that there was daylight at the bus stop if they were starting at 7:15, like our high school students do right now. And then also significantly interrupting current family schedules, which we know any change in time would interfere with a family schedule. And so the Operations and Infrastructure Council would like to continue to move forward with their research. And they would like to continue to collect both qualitative through surveys and quantitative collecting other data that we have about changing start times in our community. And then also, we want to be able to have some small focus groups, host some community forums to be able to hear the concerns or the positive effects that this would have on our students. And they would like to have your approval to be able to move forward with this.
Right, so before any discussion, I would, I think, the question on the floor then really is whether or not to instruct the, I'm sorry, it's the...
The Operations and Infrastructure Council.
Operations and Infrastructure Council to continue with their research by conducting surveys and forums. And so I'd entertain a motion to instruct them to do so.
So moved. Second?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a very important issue. One, we've heard a lot from families and from students for a while, and it's certainly become more in the news nationally and locally, as well as something that needs to be done. So it doesn't seem like we're, you know, out of position, obviously, to discuss the merits or talk about specifics now. But I do think it's a worthwhile endeavor, so I'm glad that we're really making headway at this point. Any questions, Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think it's pretty understood that option C would be ideal as far as meeting all those criteria, having the older students go to school earlier and so on. But I could not, last time, I couldn't get past the fact that so many parents came to me and said, I rely on that high school student to get my elementary or be home with my middle school students. And so that was my biggest issue then. The only issue I'd have here now would be, of course, the additional cost, which I'd like you to speak to in a moment. And then the other one is the idea of two school buses instead of one going down the same route or a very similar route at the same time. That could definitely cause some logistical issues. So if you could speak to both of those just a little bit?
Sure, yeah. We, when we started to talk about having the middle school and the high school start at the same time, we knew that there would need to be an adjustment in transportation. We never really got into the detail level about, like, how many additional buses we would need, what that would look like in terms of routes, if there was even a way to quite even possibly have, and this is just an idea, middle school and high school students together on the same bus. There are things that, you know, and I'm with you, right? There are things that, you know, and I'm with you, right? But I think in terms of all the different options that are available and out there to us, we do need to exhaust everything to see what would work for our community, what would work in terms of our transportation capabilities or not.
So that would be part of this next phase?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Kettis?
Thank you. So I had a question before, before you gave that answer, but that, that answer got me thinking that if we're doubling the buses, so to speak, to cover high school and middle school, it, I would think that we then have that many more buses to provide shorter elementary school routes. I know you haven't, you all haven't gotten into the detail, but was that part of the concept at least that was discussed, or even that was too, too in the weeds?
Yeah, we were, we were definitely trying to grapple with, A, what was best for students' health needs in terms of, you know, sleep requirements and being able to be more attentive in school and to have that positively affect their school performance. And, you know, we tried to stay true to that and then come up with all scenarios that would provide us with different opportunities to get there. And so that's why we're here today.
Thank you. And then the, the question I had before your previous answer, a lot of the data in here is related to high school students, but as we had talked about it pre-COVID and even as the committee was doing their research, we heard a lot about elementary school students being more functional in the morning than in the afternoon. So has some of the preliminary research supported that theory, or, or have you mainly focused on high school?
Yeah, the research does show that, but when we did look at what other districts were doing in the area, most kept their elementary start times later and just adjusted their high school and their middle school start times because I feel like some of the reasons that were already expressed here this evening, that was one of the reasons why they kept this elementary start time the same.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Wethers. So your, your last statement, excuse me, partially answered one of the questions I had regarding, you know, what other districts in the area, what, what have they done, what other dark districts or neighboring districts may have made this change already?
Yeah, so I have, I have a list of some that have made the change recently and some that were working on it, and also all the information from the Hakamak League with all their start and end times too. So I have all of that information, and so now it'll be more about really getting into the weeds and prevent, presenting you with all of that qualitative data, just to see what is, what has happened in districts, surrounding districts, and within our, our close proximity as well.
Excellent. I'm glad that the, the Operations and Infrastructure Council has raised this again and has come to, to us. You know, again, there's been a lot of research done lately, or not lately, but there, there is existing research about circadian rhythms and, and learning, I think it's very important. And I remember when we first started discussing this, it was pre-pandemic, and, you know, there were some, some community members that had very strong opinions, one way or the other, based on what was life was like at that time. And although that was just a short two years ago, so much has changed that I, I think it's a great time to readdress it because family structures and work schedules may be different as well. So again, just a thanks for bringing this forward.
Mr. Kettis?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. So is the council's intention to come with one specific option and all of the details of that option, or to go into the details of all three options for us to choose which one makes the most sense?
Yeah, so I think we need to present families with all the different options. I think we need to get some feedback about that and then have conversations with them and then come back to you with all of the information that we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I just, the INO Council's been doing an awful lot of work on this because I've been listening to the reports a couple of times a month, and they've really been, you know, getting into a lot of the detail, and they've come to this point where, you know, they, they need our input and, you know, our direction, and actually a blessing to go forward and come up and engage the community with this. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized all the work because they have been working on this the last couple of years, and they have put in an incredible amount of energy and time into this, so, and they've still got a lot of work ahead of them. But I think it's time to, to take this next step.
Mr. Frappier?
Just a clarifying question. Are there any districts around this that push everybody back by a uniform time?
Not that I've seen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I mean, I definitely support going to the next step. You know, the details matter to me. I, I will say one of the things that would be highly concerning, and I'd want to hear mitigation steps if that was a proposal, is having 10-year-olds and 18-year-olds on the same bus is something that it would be hard to convince me is acceptable, but maybe you could. Just want to throw that out there so that way if you do come back with that recommendation, you have, you're ready to explain how that would be okay.
Happy to do that. I would note that there are, I don't know about lots, but there are certainly districts in which the middle school and the high school share a campus, and students of a wide range of ages being on the same bus is a regular practice. So it's a thing that people find a way to work, make work. I actually don't think it'll work for us because we don't have that, that kind of configuration.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, so we have a motion to instruct the Operations and Infrastructure Council to continue with their looking into this topic and go forward with surveys of the community and parents, public forums, and then to report back to the committee. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing the committee's report. Last item on the business agenda is my item, which is school committee meeting start times. It was brought to my attention a while back, and everything that's been going on has been pushed off and pushed off, that we're one of, if not the only, we're an outlier in our, in our start times and starting as late as we do. Many districts start earlier, a lot at six. I don't necessarily think six would work for us, but I do acknowledge that the administrators and our staff that are here stay here through the, the full day, which makes for quite, quite a long day. So in speaking with them, there is a desire to move the meetings up a little bit, acknowledging that, you know, many of us work and, and many of us travel from farther away. As a compromise, I propose moving the start times to 6:30 from 7:00. We sometimes start that early when we have special events going on anyway, so it wouldn't be a major change. I think it would be a compromise and also getting this out of here a little bit earlier on those long nights as well. So before putting it up for discussion, I'd be looking for a motion to amend the school committee meeting calendar so that the start time of all regular school committee meetings would begin at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? Mr. Frappier?
Would this impact the subcommittee meetings as well?
The subcommittee meetings could, I mean, we could do one of two things. The subcommittee, because some of them will start at 6:30. So my thought was that the sub, each individual subcommittee could, you know, could amend their schedule as, as they deem appropriate. We could amend the motion to, to make all subcommittee meetings start at 6:30 as well, or just have each subcommittee take it up individually. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so the motion has been made and seconded to move all regular school committee meetings of the full committee to 6:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So that will start with the September 12th, 2022 meeting, and Judy and the administration will take care of amending the schedule. Great, thank you. Next minutes from our June 27th, 2022 meeting, which our last meeting, which was a while ago, the minutes were circulated with your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, edits, changes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda, four items tonight. Motion to accept the contractual obligation, the amount of $88.25 from Planet 8 Inc. as broken down on the check received dated July 15th, 2022. Motion to accept a payment in the amount of $14.75 from Base State Textiles to Hill Roberts. Motion to accept a payment in the amount of $21 from Base State Textiles to Hill Roberts. Motion to declare, declare the list of obsolete Koelo Middle School textbooks has broken down on the August 20, August 19th list.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. One subcommittee report tonight, and that's policy and personnel, and I will turn it over to Mr. Storrs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the subcommittee met last Monday, or the Monday before.
Maybe the Monday before.
Yeah, Monday before. I was like, I was waiting last Monday. Yeah, so, sorry, two Mondays ago. And we, we didn't have a very large agenda, but one of the main things that we discussed was policy AC and policy ACAB. AC being our harassment policy and AC, I'm sorry, our, our discrimination policy and, and ACAB being our harassment policy. The administration recommends that we kind of merge those two policies into one, being, you know, designated AC, which would now be discrimination and harassment. Looking at masks policies, they have the same thing, they have AC where it is a combination of discrimination and harassment, but then their ACAB is specifically sexual harassment. The administration, we discussed that, and the administration feels, excuse me, having everything in one policy is better because it's more defensible, it's easier to tell people to look in one place rather than, well, it depends, you need, you need to go look over there or over there, depending on the situation. So we heard that, we understood it, and we kind of agreed that, you know, maybe merging the two policies into one is the right way to go. Again, we looked at ours as compared to masks, and wherever we can, we want to be uniform with masks. So a lot of our starting of the policy goes with masks. We ensured that the wording that we use for all of the protected classes is identical to masks. So, and, and then between our meeting and now, luckily, we, we, the motion we made was done in such a way that it allowed us to edit the policy that you received for this meeting because a memo came out, and it was related to one of the protected classes. Let me open it up here and I'll, I'll read the new wording, which might be new for the members of the subcommittee as well. It had to do with on the race, so, you know, all the protected classes are, you know, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military slash veteran status, marital status, familial status, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background, national origin, or any other category protected by state or federal law. That's the standard wording, and that is by the law. So that, that's the most important thing to know about this non-discrimination and harassment policy. The majority of our wording is very specifically to the law, and the rest of it is all about how we deal with that here in Alloboro. The additional part for the members of the subcommittee, and again, it, they were like, the next day a memo came out and I sent it right to the administration and said, hey, this just came out, see if we could add it in. And luckily, the way we worded, as I mentioned, the, the motion enabled us to use the wording for masks. So now it's going to say on the basis of race, and then it's going to say including traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protective hairstyles. So that's the new wording that just came from masks. So we figure, let's get that in now for this policy so we can discuss it here rather than have to bring this back to you a month from now. So again, the beginning policy mirrors as best as we can mask policy. All those protected classes are in the same order and the same wording. The rest of it is all very similar to what we had before, talks about what we do here in Alloboro. It talks about who the superintendent designates to deal with which types of things, which is again required by law. So the designation of at least one administrative service, compliance officer, all that type, that's, we already have that in our policy, but we made sure that everything matches all of the different requirements. So the second part of the policy, this is the stuff that we brought in from policy ACAB, it had to do with definitions, which was provided by legal counsel. A lot of it had to do with the different types of harassment, as well as the different types of sexual harassment. There are actually different categories, Title IX, non-Title IX, and so on. So those are all, we kind of moved them towards the back of the policy, so it's, it kind of flows in such a way where it's a joint anti-discrimination and harassment, and then the sexual harassment stuff is kind of in the second part of the policy. So the, the policy that has been brought forward to you is, was voted out of subcommittee unanimously, and again, it's the merging of policy AC, our current policy AC and policy ACAB, and it obsoles policy ACAB. So the motion was to actually do both, to recommend approval of policy AC with all the edits that I was just explaining it, which has been provided to the members, and to obsolete policy ACAB. So I'll ask the administration if there's anything that you would like to add, because I covered pretty well.
Good job.
Okay, are there, so this motion came out unanimously, it's being put on the table for discussion. Is there any discussion or questions regarding policy AC? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that takes care of ACAB, which will be removed, and the new AC will go in, and this will go into effect immediately. So next, we have two job descriptions that we discussed. These are not new job positions. The first one I will do is the Director of Family Engagement and Assistance. So this is a position that already exists. We approved this last year, I think. So the person's been in the, in the role for a little bit of time, has provided input and recommendations. So some of the things that we're changing is the title, as well as some additional responsibilities towards the end of the policy. I think it was number, off the top of my head, 33, 35-ish, I think, somewhere in there. So the last five or six different responsibilities, that, that's pretty much the only changes to the job description. Am I right? Yes. Okay. So again, this was voted out of subcommittee unanimously, it's going up for discussion. Any questions or discussion, please?
Just for clarification, this previously was known as Director of Social Emotional Learning.
Yep, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, we had the job description for the Assistant Director of Family Engagement. Again, this position is an existing position, currently titled?
Family Engagement Specialist.
Family Engagement Specialist. This person has been in the role similarly for a while and has provided input. So beside the title, would you, Ms. Regan, be able to speak to some of the changes for this one? I think it was a little more extensive than the other.
Yeah, so this one is more in report, reporting to the Director of Social Emotional Learning and also contributing to the communication needs that we have in our district now that we have the new website, communication with some of our outside partners and the community resources that we significantly rely on, and significantly supporting the registration process, especially now that it's online, and coordinating that process with transportation and some of the other supports that I, we know that our families need.
Okay, so again, this changes to this job description was voted out unanimously. I'll put it up for discussion. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the job description for the Assistant Director of Family Engagement and Assistance? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Next, we have open forum. Anyone who would like to address the committee at open forum? All right, see no one, I'm going to close open forum. Any new business tonight? Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give everybody a quick little update on the rebranding process. So everybody probably remembers back in, I think it was January, we made the motion to, you know, rebrand and to keep and rebrand the Blue Babadures. Since that time, Mr. Fattado, the superintendent, asked Mr. Fattado to take the lead on, on the rebranding process. He has hired a marketing specialist named Jeff Eagles, who's been working on the project. He also formed a subcommittee that he asked me, a special subcommittee that he asked me to be on as the chairman of the policy subcommittee. The other members of that subcommittee is Mrs. Campbell, the principal of the, of the high school, Mr. Hul, the athletic director, and Mrs. Christopher Lee, the CTE marketing teacher. So the four of us, we started over the summer. First thing we did was we took a survey, very similar to the survey the students took a year ago, same sort of questions, you know, what's the concerns, what, what do we want to be known as, those kind of things. And that helped Mr. Eagles to kind of start figuring out his direction for his ideas. He has, then we had a second meeting, so so far at this point, we've had two meetings. His second meeting, he did start. His second meeting, he did start to present ideas to us. We had discussions, not going to get into the details yet because they're still being worked out. At the same time, we, we do want to have a big reveal. I know back in January, we were talking about the big reveal being a week ago. Obviously, that didn't happen, and so we are looking forward at when that big reveal might happen. We do believe that, you know, there's an event that might be towards the fall, sometime in the fall, where we will be able to do a reveal of our, of our new mascot or, and our new rebranding of our logo and all that other stuff. But there's a lot of things that have happened between now and then. So we are meeting again this coming Friday, and going to look at the new designs, updated designs from Mr. Eagles, and then we'll move on to the next phase of the process, which they will be now an extended, extended subcommittee, where there'll be a couple of students as well as some community members that Mr. Fattado was invited. They'll come in, we'll have some discussions with them, and then we'll continue on our process. So if that's where we're at right now, is there anything that you guys want to add that sounds good? So I just wanted to keep everybody apprised of where we're at.
Thank you, Mrs. Storrs. Any other new business?
All right. The Adderall School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, A2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respects to negotiations with non-union personnel. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, the school committee will not return to open session.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Frappier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddis?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers, yes, Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Bordeaux?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
All right, let's take a minute or two.